Good evening, everyone. All right, I would now call to order a regular scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October the fourteenth to order, and to get started, if you would, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We now move to the invocation and tonight presenting a prayer for our town. I would like to call up Eddie Mullins, pastor of Summit Church and also a part of our Public Safety Chaplaincy Team. So, thank you, welcome.
Absolutely. As someone who's been a resident and calls Apex home for eighteen years, I just want to say thank you for your service to this great town. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this gift of this wonderful day and just this opportunity to gather as a community that truly seeks the good of its people. I'm grateful for the leaders who serve this town, for our mayor, our council members, the staff, and our first responders, God, and the weighty responsibility that you've entrusted them with. God, in your word in Romans thirteen, it reminds us to honor and pray for our leaders. And so, God, tonight, we pray for wisdom and clarity and discernment and compassion as our leaders decide and discuss what is best for our community. We ask that you give them integrity and humility in these decisions. God, I pray that this meeting tonight is one of collaboration and not divisiveness, that it's purpose and people over politics, and that we may be reminded that true leadership is that of sacrificial servanthood. But, God, none of this is possible without your love for us, and so, we give you all glory, honor, and praise for your son, Jesus, who's died for our sins. God, we ask that you protect our homes, our families, and everyone that calls Apex the peak of good living home. We pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you so much. All right, now, I would like to recognize a special guest who's here, Lisa Montoya. She's a member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so stand up if we recognize. Round of applause. You deserve it. You do hard work. Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. This is an opportunity for the members to look at the consent agenda items, and before we move on, I do want to point out consent item number fourteen. I would like some clarification on that. We had discussed before as a council the possibility to work in the Fiesta Family Services in disagreement and looking at a good model for them to move forward, so can you provide some clarity on this framework?
Yes, sir, and I'd like to ask Marla, our Director of CDNC, if she could come up and address that, please.
Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, council members. Speaking about that particular item, we have worked with and had conversations with Fiesta Christiana about the possibilities of a collaboration. What we have with this particular item on the agenda is the initial part of looking at how we might potentially co-develop the parcel, and with that co-development would create an opportunity for a facility to be built that could provide potential office space were the organization Fiesta Christiana be able to work in agreement with Dorcas Ministries, which would be the lead developer of that particular facility. So, in our conversations with Dorcas Ministries, we have mentioned that we were also interested in helping to find a space for Fiesta within that particular facility if those parties could work it out. Dorcas would be responsible for the development of that particular facility if we do actually move from site planning and design to actual co-development arrangements, and so, we made it known we had an interest in looking at including Fiesta so that they could be a part of that if those parties were able to reach an agreement.
Okay. Just add one more to, the legion with the veteran services, is that part of it as well?
Wake County, yes, sir. So, we've met with both the county manager and deputy county manager, as well as the director of the Housing Department, about locating an office there for veteran services, and they have also mentioned that there may be some other resources, financial resources around other types of services that they could also contribute to the operations of that particular facility so that we would have a wide array, wide array, a variety of services that could be offered to residents in Apex. So, veteran services being one aspect, and then some other social supports that could be offered through Dorcas and Wake County at that particular location.
Thank you so much for that clarity.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, any other, any questions from council on the consent agenda? If not, is their motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve?
All right, go ahead. Motion approved. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, motion carries. Move now to setting of the regular meeting agenda. The meeting agenda is before you, council members. Are there any recommended changes? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. We have a set meeting agenda. We move now to updates by a town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I've got a little bit of a report for you. I'm going to start with some good news. We don't always get good news in these chambers, but I wanted to mention, many of you have probably seen it, there've been a couple articles about it, but Wallet Hub names North Carolina Town in the top one percent of small cities in the U.S. So, I wanted to mention that. Thank you all for your support and your work in getting Apex recognized. We get several of these, it's not a month goes by that something comes out, but what struck me on this one is they used forty-five different metrics to review the communities that were sized, small, small to medium, so it was like twenty-five thousand up to a hundred thousand, I think, in population, but we came out in top first in North Carolina and third in the country in that. So, congratulations to you all, and once again, proving that we are the peak of good living. So, I wanted to start with that bit of good news, and I've got a couple things that kind of dovetail with that. Talking from economic development, we are also dipping our toes a little bit in tourism. As you know, that's been a priority for them set through the budget process for economic development this year. So, for the first time, we'll be featured in Our State Magazine in the Tar Heels Towns section. There'll be, there's a first statewide tourism marketing effort by our economic development to promote the town and increase tourism. So, that article will be coming out again in the Our State Magazine, and then in May and June of twenty-six, will also be featured in the Our State Magazine's reels. So, we're ramping up efforts on the tourism front with that. Next, an update on Olive Chapel roadway. Nothing significant to mention other than the good news that we are still on track and looking at a January opening, and I wanted to publicly thank DOT. There've been some hurdles that have been put in our way, but DOT has been great partners with us working through those, and they remain committed to the project and are still on track for a January completion on Olive Chapel. Next, something that makes us the peak here, we've got a lot of events and festivals, I'm not even going to go over all of them, but there are a few highlights that I want to mention. Right now, from October eleventh to the thirty-first is the Tour of Frights, so that's where we have businesses and houses throughout Apex that have decorated for Halloween and fall, and so, from six to nine, you can tour those through the thirty-first. There are two maps available, two routes, there's an orange route and a purple route, and you can get all this information on our website and kind of check out the different efforts of our residents here in Apex. Also, an important item coming up, October twenty-second and twenty-third is an opportunity for our residents to be involved with Peak Plan 2055. We have our public forum event, so there'll be two of them next week. The first, Wednesday, October twenty-second, is drop-in from four-thirty PM to six-thirty PM. That one will be at Hope Community Church, and that's at two zero eight zero East Williams. And then, the second is on Thursday, October twenty-third. That will be from four-thirty PM to six-thirty PM, and that's right here at Apex Town Hall at seventy-three Hunter Street. So, significant effort there. It's not every day that we update that plan, so again, this is the Peak Plan 2055. So, please, give us your input on what you'd like to see in that plan through 2055. October twenty-third through the thirty-first is the Scarecrow Row, which happens at our Apex Community Park, and you can come and see the scarecrows. I think there's limited registration to create one, that might be booked up, there was the first twenty families to get there, but you can definitely take the tour and see the scarecrows from the twenty-third to the thirty-first at the community park. We have on the twenty-fifth of October at the Halle, there's the Goblin's Groove Family Dance, so a fun family event from five to seven at the Halle. Come out and enjoy that. And wrapping up the holidays, we've got Spooky Trails, October twenty-ninth, you can dress up your pup in a costume and come out to the Apex Nature Park from five to seven, and you can bring a donation for the Wake County Animal Shelter, and you'll receive a raffle prize ticket if you do so. So, a lot of fun events coming up for the month of October. Another significant event happening in October is early voting, and so, we've got that at the John and Brown Community Center. That will start on the October twenty-fifth. Various times, but Saturday is from eight to three, Sunday from one to six, then during the week, Monday through Friday, it's eleven AM to six PM, and then it closes out on November first from eight AM to three PM, right here at the John and Brown Center. Next, we've got a budget survey that is underway, and so, the survey can be found on the town's website. It's at apexnc.org/onefivethree/budget. The one-five-three is just something that's in the mechanical there, but again, it's apexnc.org/onefivethree/budget, and it will be open through December first. So, another excellent opportunity for our residents to contribute and get some input into the budget process. All right. Next, I want to loop back to a utilities update. Have some statistics and information to share, and we will also be putting some of this into the FAQs and on our webpage. I'll hit some of the quick statistics here. We remain under one percent with our missed reads. Explain that's when new meters are put in place, there's a little bit of a time period where they have to wake up, so we have, that's below one percent, we're actually right around three-quarters of a percent or less on that, so a significantly small number on that piece. SEW, which is the vendor that provides customer service with our portal, we've tracked our numbers. If you look at July, we received a little over two thousand phone calls into that system. For August, it went down to one thousand seven hundred and eleven, and then September, we saw that number significantly decrease to eight hundred and six calls. So, we anticipate October, another significant drop, and then our contract with them, we probably won't be extending too much further as the calls will start to dwindle there. And as you can imagine with your calls, the wait times in that system are significantly lower as well. We continue to monitor the cycle length, so since the last update, we had a posting for cycle one, and that averaged out to thirty-one days for the last cycle, so we remain, the average for cycle one over the last one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, last eight months, it remains twenty-nine point six days to the cycle, and cycle two for seven months is thirty point four days. So, pretty good information there on cycle lengths, return to normal. We've talked about our variance report and continue to monitor. There will be variances every time we run a cycle. There's certain parameters that trigger those variances, and then we dive in and say, okay, why was this abnormal? So, we are maintaining a lower rate of variances, and the significant portion to look at on this is, are the variances to the customers' favor or not? And on the last cycle, so for cycle one, the variances that were reported, ninety-three percent were to the customers' favor, and only, it's like, seven percent then were potentially overbilled items. So, then we dive in, focusing first on the overbilled items, and then work through the other variances, but that's down, cycle before, it was a ninety-ten split, so now we're at ninety-three-seven. So, we see improvement on that front as well. In looking on the customer service side, we continue to monitor through Ask Apex, which is our three-one-one information system. We are addressing, that team is addressing, eighty-nine percent of all phone calls are handled through the Ask Apex team, so they're able to answer the questions, resolve the issues on almost, we're close to the ninety percent mark. So, ten percent then have to be pushed to our billing and collections or out to different entities because they also take calls related to trash services, planning, permits, parks and wrecks, so some of those calls are being pushed then to the various departments, but close to ninety percent are being handled in that department. The other significant thing to point out is that our wait times on the Ask Apex line have significantly decreased, and this is data from last week, but we had a low on Wednesday of last week of one minute, five seconds was your wait if you called Ask Apex, and the high for last week was an even two minutes on Fridays, and that will fluctuate primarily because of staffing and training and things that we do, but we are two minutes or less last week on wait times for contacting Ask Apex, which is significant. So, not only are they handling ninety percent and able to resolve, but they're doing it pretty quick, too, and going through those phone calls. So, our Ask Apex team is doing a phenomenal job, and last week was Customer Service Appreciation Week, so they killed it in Customer Service Week, so thank you to that team. Further, going into the log that you've heard about, the Issues Call Log, there's some nuances with this that it'll take me a long time to explain, so I'll try to keep it high level. Because we have a backlog, any of the calls that come in that would normally be routine, there's a baseline to our customer service, right? So, say we had no systems transitions, no issues, you would still have customers calling with meter issues or questions on their bills, so all of those are, if they're not answered in Ask Apex, they then go to our log. So, yes, many of those are because of our transitions, but some of those are routine customer service calls that we would be getting anyway. There's always going to be a baseline. So, when we look at that, we had a significant number that got addressed late this afternoon, so my updates are written in pen here, but we are around forty-six percent through that log of customer calls. That leaves four hundred and ninety-seven customers that have issues that we are working through. And again, that's issues related to transition, that's issues that we would get on a daily basis, and when you take that as a percentage of a whole of our customers, we're over thirty thousand customers, we're looking at somewhere between one and two percent of our customers that we still have left to address on our call log. So, we continue to see the percentage addressed come up, and we, as a matter of fact, had an additional training for some of our staff in Milsoft today as it relates to budget billing, so we know we've had some customers that have had some issues related to budget billing, and we anticipate in the next few days, we'll see a breakthrough on that piece as well and be able to address their concerns. So, every day, it gets better from our perspective. We're increasing the training and awareness in our new software programs, and we're kind of knocking out all the different issues. Solar, we sent out a pretty good communication to our solar customers that were registered on the log today, so again, just chipping away at those items. Closing out, the third-party recalculation that we had through Barry Dunn, we are through ninety-eight percent of those reviews, two-thirds of the letters, so that's approximately a hundred and twenty of the letters have gone out for the roughly a hundred and eighty people that signed up. There are a couple of nuances that are, we have to finalize, so we've got less than fifteen, I think, that are in review or waiting for, maybe it's a solar issue, balance bill issue, so there's some side issues that they may have requested us to look at, but ninety-eight percent have been reviewed of the hundred and eighty. The average amount due to Apex from that was thirty-six dollars and nine cents. The average amount due from Apex to the customer was twelve dollars and five cents, and the end result of how it broke down, majority that owed, it was eighty-nine percent of those reviewed owed Apex, and eleven percent were owed from Apex. And I think that is what I have for you now, unless I missed something.
Just a quick question on the, we had talked last time about the reconcile of customers and their bills and those numbers. Do you have that information yet, or are you still compiling that?
Are you speaking about like after we resolve the, we don't have concrete numbers on, after we've gone through our analysis, how many are not satisfied with that resolution? We still are working on that, and I anticipate probably in the next few weeks, we would have a good solid number to report on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other information?
No, sir.
All right, appreciate it. All right, that closes out the updates by the manager. We move now to presentations. We have four proclamations tonight, so we'll do what we do, go out in front and read those together, so would join me out front. All right, we have many things to proclaim tonight. We'll start with honoring and recognizing the great Apex Lions Club in eighty-eight years of service. That's amazing. Round of applause, absolutely. So, we're happy to this. We'll start with the proclamation, and starting us off tonight will be council member Gant.
Whereas, the Apex Lions Club was founded by thirty-one local businessmen who desired to make Apex a better place to live and to help others. Apex Lion Club was chartered on October seventh, nineteen thirty-seven, and was initially sponsored by the Sanford Lions Club and serves as the oldest continuous service club in Apex, and?
Whereas, in nineteen forty-eight, the Apex Lions Club signed on to be a charter organization for the town's initial Boy Scout troop. Club members and many other community members pitched in to build the Boy Scout Hut, still used today, and?
Whereas, the club is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization with forty-one members, over ninety percent of all donations and fundraising goes back in the local community, assisting with projects that truly invest in the well-being of our community, and?
Whereas, the Apex Lions Club's official motto is "We Serve." However, many people say that "Lion" stands for Loving Individuals Offering Needed Services. They provide a wide array of support services, including support for those with visual or hearing impairments, local food insecurity, and youth enrichment programs, and?
Whereas, the Lions Club International seeks to empower local Lions Clubs to support their communities through needed humanitarian service and grants that impact lives and encourage world peace and international understanding.
Now, therefore, I, Jock K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of October twentieth through October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, Apex Lions Club Appreciation Week in the town of Apex, and urge all residents to learn more about the Apex Lions Club's services and programs, and even join hands in accomplishing their mission. services and programs and even join hands in accomplishing their mission of "We Serve." And I do want to point out, you guys have the best fish plates in the area. You really do, absolutely. So where's, where's Horace Johnson at? That is appropriate for him. He does it all the time, so good job. So welcome, come on up and get your proclamation. Thank you so much, all the members. Another round of applause as they approach, please.
Yeah, we'll get a couple more on this side over here.
I just want to thank the town for this appreciation. We're very grateful. We are the longest-serving community organization, civic organization in the town. And we invite all of you to come join us at a meeting and see what we do and get more involved. As always, we need more volunteers to continue doing what we do, so we invite you to join us. apexlions.org if you want to learn more about us and find out when and where we meet. Thanks.
Thanks again, Apex Lions Club. We move now to the second proclamation. This is Cyber Security Awareness Month 2025 and we have a proclamation. We'll kick it off with Councilmember Mahaffey.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is Cyber Security Awareness Month 2025. Whereas Cyber Security Awareness Month is observed nationally each October as an opportunity to promote awareness of the importance of online safety and responsible digital practices and?
Whereas the town of Apex recognizes that cybersecurity is a shared responsibility that requires ongoing attention from individuals, businesses and government alike and?
Whereas the town's information technology department remains committed to maintaining secure and reliable systems in support of daily operations and service delivery to residents and?
Whereas the protection of digital information, infrastructure and communication is essential to the functioning of our local government and the wellbeing of our community and?
Whereas continued education, vigilance and adherence to cybersecurity best practices can help reduce risk associated with an increasingly digital world. And whereas the town of Apex continues to stand firm in its belief that maintaining cybersecurity is critically important and is proud of our IT team for all they do to keep us safe and?
Now therefore, I, Joc K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025, Cyber Security Awareness Month in the town of Apex and urge all residents to remain diligent in their online activities and use proper precautions for the safety of themselves and their information. So accepting the proclamation tonight will be our IT Director, Erica Seiko. All right, and also Conrad Sane, please come on up.
Change your passwords, don't click on links. Maybe talk to your family about not buying gift cards too.
I love it. All right. Third proclamation tonight is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilmember Killersberg.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2025. Whereas domestic violence is a heinous crime perpetuated against millions of individuals nationwide, including 35.2% of women and 30.3% of men in North Carolina at some point during their lives and?
Whereas domestic violence is an issue that impacts people and families here in Apex and disproportionately impacts underserved and marginalized population who often face barriers in accessing essential services and?
Whereas the town of Apex Police Department works with victims of domestic violence to connect them with organizations that support the healing process and navigate the difficult circumstances they are facing and?
Whereas one such organization is Shining Light in Darkness, a local nonprofit which plays a vital role in crisis response, direct services, resources and referrals by offering emergency housing, coordination, legal assistance and case management services and 24-hour crisis hotline at 919-791-5578 and?
Whereas the town of Apex commends our police department and the many organizations who helped provide critical support for domestic violence survivors in our town and across the nation.
Now therefore, I, Joc K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025, Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the town of Apex and encourage residents to check in on their families and loved ones and offer support to those that have been impacted by domestic violence. So accepting the proclamation tonight is our Victims Advocate, Danica Coleman and Detective Crystal Byrd. So please come up. Again, thank you to these wonderful women of the police department. They do a lot of work. I've had the pleasure of working with both of them, so I just want to again, thank you for all you do. All right. Move now to proclamation four, Down Syndrome Awareness Month 2025. And will be Mayor Pro Tem Ed Gray kicking us off.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the proclamation for Down Syndrome Awareness Month 2025. Whereas Down Syndrome, also known as trisomy 21, is a genetic condition caused by the presence of all or a part of a third copy of chromosome 21, which affects how the body and brain develop.
And whereas Down Syndrome is a common intellectual disability affecting around 400,000 individuals in the United States, with nearly 40% of Americans knowing someone with Down Syndrome personally and?
Whereas while individuals with Down Syndrome face many healthy and developmental challenges, they are intelligent and productive members of their communities, able to live full and happy lives with a life expectancy of around six years and?
Whereas World Down Syndrome Day's 2025 theme is "Improve Our Support Systems," highlighting the continued need for advocacy, education and increased opportunities for individuals with Down Syndrome and?
Whereas the town of Apex recognizes the tremendous amount of love and joy individuals with Down Syndrome bring to our community and affirm our commitment to breaking stigmas associated with this disability.
Now therefore, I, Joc K. Gilbert, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025, Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the town of Apex and call upon residents to extend their support to the many Down Syndrome support organizations in our community and beyond. Dylan Kenlaw and Nick Salcato and families, please come up and receive the proclamation. All right, thank you, Members of Council, for joining in on those proclamation readings. We'll move now to public forum. This is an opportunity for community members to speak. We want to hear from you, we're listening. And I would like to highlight, we do have a new timer tonight, brand new. So yeah, there you go. No excuses. So you see, we have just the lights, but we also now have the official time. So we'll go ahead and move into it and we'll start off with our first presenter will be, oh absolutely, okay. We're going to take a brief pause to allow, if you want to stay around, please hang out. If you don't, this would be the time to exit. All right, good, I love it. All right, we'll start with Tom Calhoun. You would join us up front. And Mr. Clerk, three minutes.
Hey, I'm Tom Calhoun. Based on my understanding of the statistics that were just read, I must be the 1% that's having problems with my utility bill. Ever since July, I have had a past due amount that has been carried on since then all the way to the new October bill, which I just received. And this continues, the exact same amount continues to go down the line every month. Now it may not be a crisis to you, but my concern is every month, Experian and all the rest of the credit places dropped my credit score because I have a continual unpaid bill. And it affects me. So it may not be a big deal to y'all, but it's a big deal to me. And I've even got the canceled check from my bank that has the town of Apex deposited it back in, let's see here, in July. And here it is. So why in the world do I continually get charged every month, including this month, for a past due bill that affects me and y'all have gotten the money? And I'll be glad to give this to whoever wants to take a look at it, but it's the check from the bank and it's endorsed by the town.
Yeah. All right, thanks for coming to speak tonight. Michelle O'Connor, Michelle O'Connor. Mr. Clerk, you have, you have four more people, I think.
I have.
Yeah, I think you do, yeah. Nine minutes, yeah.
So good evening. Last Monday at Wake County, at the Wake County Commissioner meeting, a couple from Wake Forest spoke from their, during the public forum about a problem that no one else was willing to solve. Despite an unprecedented level of growth and development in their area, the road remains a dirt road and the amount of dirt kicked up by all the cars and trucks is keeping them indoors. They literally cannot breathe when they go outside. Their remarks were shocking to the commissioners, so much so that Susan Evans felt compelled to speak up despite having reminded everyone an hour earlier that the commissioners do not respond to public comment during the meeting. And she assured them that they would have, there would be follow-up action. To be clear, I don't expect council to break that tradition tonight, though I do commend you for doing so just now. But the experiences of the couple of Wake Forest left me with concerns for Apex regarding the potential and amount of air pollution we will experience if the data center is allowed to be built as it is currently proposed. The developer proposes diesel generators as backup power for the data center and these will need to be tested regularly. Though large-scale data centers are still relatively new, we know that diesel generators, regardless of what they are attached to, produce significant quantities of air pollutants, including nitrogen oxide, sulfur oxide, carbon monoxide and particulate matter. Air pollutants are silent killers. In 2021, air pollution was responsible for 8.1 million deaths, where at least half of those were attributed to outdoor exposure to fine particulate matter, which is defined based on the size of less than 2.5 microns in diameter. These particulates are a unique threat as they do not, they not only are capable of penetrating lung and olfactory tissues, but are small enough to cross the blood, the blood-brain barrier. There is no exposure level that is, that is considered safe, just levels considered acceptable, which is currently nine micrograms per meter cubed. This was recently decreased due to recommendations from the WHO and EPA in an effort to reduce the potential for health problems and increase overall quality of life. And while it would be wrong of me to ignore that North Carolina has made significant efforts in increasing air quality for its citizens, the chronic intermittent release of pollutants, especially fine particulate matter from the data center diesel generators will threaten that achievement and our health along with it. The scientific literature concerning the fine particulate matter and effects on health is significant. First, let's address the things we innately think of. Exposures to these particulates increase frequency and severity of asthma attacks, increases the likelihood of development of respiratory illnesses like pneumonia, negatively affect chronic conditions like COPD and can lead to the development of lung cancer. However, exposure and impact don't stop at our lungs. Exposure to fine particulate matter is associated with increased risk for development of cardiovascular disease, diabetes, obesity, breast, ovarian and colorectal cancers, as well as neurodegenerative diseases such as Alzheimer's disease. In elementary school-aged children, exposure to fine particulate matter is associated with changes in brain architecture, which has further impact on cognition and emotion. When pregnant women are exposed, there are multiple risks to the fetus, which include altered or underdeveloped respiratory, nervous and metabolic systems, preterm birth and even fetal death. And a nod to our eventual Children's Hospital CEO, Dr. Musley Burks, a world-class pediatric allergist with an extensive research background in peanut allergy, I would also like to note that early life exposure to fine particulate matter is also associated with both the prevalence and persistence of peanut allergy in children. Now, as a scientist with a background in genetics and immunology, I am the first to admit that association and correlation are not causation and that the length of time and amount of exposure to fine particulate matter are likely to vary across studies. But as I stated earlier, there are no safe exposure levels, just acceptable levels that the data center will likely exceed during testing. Furthermore, the exposure will be repeated. Furthermore, the exposure will be repeated. These tests are not one and done. They happen at a given frequency, and the more we are exposed over time, the greater the likelihood that these risks become realities. There simply isn't enough time to review all the scientific studies and data with everyone tonight, but I do want to share some general biological mechanisms associated with fine particulate matter that we do know, as well as some interesting findings. First, fine particulate matter can generate excessive reactive oxygen species and free radicals within cells, which is responsible for damage to the cardiovascular system, respiratory system, and can induce carcinogenesis. Oxidative stress also promotes inflammatory signaling that can become systemic, which can also drive development and exacerbation of asthma, COPD, and diabetes. Fine particulate matter can interact with our DNA and alter expression of our genes. When these particles bind to DNA, this can break the two strands and lead to abnormal rearrangements of the DNA, which is a hallmark of cancer development, particularly lung cancer. The particulates can also interfere with factors responsible for turning our genes on and off, and these changes, which we call epigenetic changes, are implicated in pretty much every disease you can think of, and happens to be a central component of my doctoral work. Finally, a single short exposure to fine particulate matter does affect the body and takes longer to resolve than it did to initially react. In mouse models, exposure to fine particulate matter for several days resulted in activation of inflammatory pathways and genes in the brain, resulting in behavioral changes such as increased food consumption. Despite the short exposure, it took 12 weeks for the behaviors and the inflammatory gene expression to return to normal. Based on literature searches in PubMed, there are over 10,000 publications concerning fine particulate matter and its impact on some element of our health. I won't claim to have even made a dent in reviewing everything, but I do feel comfortable saying that the takeaway message is that there is nothing good for our bodies that comes from any increase in exposure. And keep in mind, my remarks only account for one of the many pollutants we will be exposed to with diesel generators, and does not account for pollutants via other sources such as the cooling towers and the materials associated with the building of the data center. Responsible growth means looking at the bigger picture and objectively asking how the benefits offset the risks. We understand that the tax revenue in Apex is disproportionately generated via its residents compared with everyone, everything else. However, the revenue that could be gained here is likely to be, result in a new burden for taxpayers, increased healthcare costs, and perhaps even the loss of opportunity to enjoy things our tax dollars currently go toward, like development of the greenways or downtown, because they will need to shelter indoors when the air quality gets too poor. If the data center is to be built at all, Apex citizens deserve better than Tier III diesel generators. The town should request that the developer utilize natural gas or even hydrogenated vegetable oil, which is surprisingly more of an industry standard than any of us realized. The town should also limit the amount of time any emergency generator is allowed to operate, mandate strict testing to ensure any emissions remain below state DEQ limits, and should request modeling studies to determine the extent of potential emissions prior to any votes or approvals. I have heard multiple times that the decision, or really decisions, concerning the data center are not just about what is good for New Hill, but what is good for all of Apex. And I couldn't agree more, because we know that this air pollution won't just be a cloud over our communities in New Hill, it will affect the entire town and beyond. This includes those who enjoy riding their bikes or taking a walk on our many greenways, and our children who wants to be, want to and really do need to run outside during recess. And it will even eventually affect the patients and their families coming near and far to our world-class Children's Hospital. I have said it before, and I will repeat it now, the quality of our lives must be prioritized above all else, because how else do we achieve the peak of good living? And with that, I'd also like to point out that tonight, we recognize Down Syndrome Awareness Month. How are we recognizing innate chromosomal disorders, but we're willing to generate new ones via exposure to fine particulate matter? I leave you with that food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Stitt.
Elizabeth Ray Stitt, 3113 Friendship Road, Mayor and Town Council, good evening. So I have been spending my spare time going back through the voting records for the last couple of years. I plan to go the previous eight, but I'm only in four. And the thing that really stood out to me is how many of these decisions were made in silos. And what I mean by that is when you go back and you look at each of these zoning packages, it's not in context with what's around it. So when we talk about the data center tonight, it's in, you're just talking about the data center. You're not talking about what's happening in Holly Springs, one mile away. We're not talking about what's happening in Chatham County, one mile away. We make decisions in Apex based on a silo. We need to sit down and have a collaborative discussions with our neighbors and say, okay, you know, Holly Springs has this pollution, Chatham has this pollution, Apex has this pollution, what is the cumulative effect? We need to be having regional discussions that we're not having, whether it's pollution, water, sewer, roadways. We're all growing in, into each other's space, but yet that collaboration is not occurring. When was the last time was there a regional public meeting? There's never been one for us as a community, never. No one has ever said, okay, Mayor of Apex, and Holly Springs, and Cary, and we all sit down and have discussions. We're growing at a pace that we're going to have a train wreck. It is obvious looking at the voting record and all the conversation about how little land is left to develop, and we've got to squeeze as much as we can get in there? That's not okay. We don't have enough water, we don't have enough roads, we don't have enough sewer. And we're not having discussions about what's variety of bringing. A lot of that is speculative. We don't know yet. There's going to be development that they're going to bring in, Holly Springs has some. We don't have enough resources. So we all need to sit down and have this conversation as a community, not in these one-off, one-off, and one-off rezonings. Because we hear all the time, this, the staff come up and say, this is in the public interest. And I ask the question, how do you measure the public interest? Is it revenue? Is it how many cars? And I was told there is no actual formula. They look at the project and they say, hey, if it's our UDO, so it's in the public interest, and we're going to go vote for it. That's no longer okay. We need to become more sophisticated about what we're doing. So I ask you to think about setting up some type of regional meeting so that we can really talk about regional issues. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Dawn Cazalino.
Dawn Cazalino, 3632 Bosco Road, good evening. I submitted a public records request because there is no public information about the Peak Plan 2015-55 Task Force. North Carolina law ensures transparency. The Public Records Law 132.1 gives residents the right to inspect government records, and the Open Meetings Law 143-318.9 requires meetings to be open and accurately documented. These laws let citizens see how decisions are made and how the money is spent. Peak Plan 2055 will guide a long-term Apex future and planning process. A task force was appointed to advise the Council, but no public notices, agendas, meetings, or contracts are available. On June 24th, 2025, the task force appeared in the Consent Agenda as CNA18, a mechanism normally reserved for routine items such as minute meetings, not major policy decisions or high-cost contracts. Yet the task force creation and consultant contract were never openly discussed, and no town clerk minutes exist. Apex entered into a contract with Nealon Planning on April 30th, 2025, for nearly half a million dollars. Two months before, the June Consent Agenda even mentioned it. The public never saw or discussed the contract, so how did Apex, Apex approve a contract? Public isn't allowed a review. The second task force meeting was a kickoff on September 22nd, 2025, appointed 12 seats, including Councilman Terry Mahaffey, a developer, land use attorney, and board appointees, but only one ETG planning representative. Were legal notices provided? The public, including affected property owners, was excluded from these early decisions of the task force selection, plan scope, and the April contract. Terry Mahaffey's role creates a potential conflict of interest. He is serving as a member, even as an alternative, on the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Tech, Technical Advisory Committee, which advises on transportation and federal funding related to Peak Plan 2055. Holding both roles creates a position of divided loyalty inconsistent with the impartiality expected of a task force member. This is a documented fact available at ethicseannc.gov/tools. You can look it up by last name. Our state constitution reminds us of why transparency matters. Article 1, Section 2, Sovereignty of the People, Article 1, Section 19, equal protection and due process. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking. Fran Hudson.
All right, I'm bringing my civics project from fifth grade. So basically, I wanted to outline the, where the authority comes from, from the town, for the town. So basically, Almighty God, our constitution, our Carolina constitution does say, you know, the people are giving basically credit to Almighty God that gave us the powers to create. So the people then created the Declaration of Independence and then the North Carolina Constitution. So the Declaration of Independence established that division from any ruler. So we are not under a ruler. So the structure of government that we have is a representative government. So our North Carolina constitution, we set aside our rights in the Article 1, section, all the 38, I think, as sections within Article 1, to protect those rights of the people and to remind everyone in government what those rights are. Article 7 covers local governments and how they're to be created. And Article 8 is for corporations, which local government is also a public corporation. So a smaller group of people in 1783 decided to put together the Town Charter of Apex. So these, from the people, you're getting the authority to be able to serve the people. It created those officer positions and to allow you to serve the town, and then the people that run for office are actually acting, sorry, asking to serve in a government position, and they take an oath, which I've mentioned before, to serve the people. The people entrusted the town to manage the public business and allowed for the creation of the ordinances, the policies, procedures, and all of those have to be pursuant to the constitutions, both North Carolina and the United States Constitution. An example of that town law is the Unified Development Ordinance. So commercial entities, developers, come and they apply, so they're asking permission to be able to do the things they want to do. The Development Services Committees, Boards, they're all tasked with scrutinizing these applications to determine if they abide by all the laws of the state and respect the rights of the people. Then the people of all the states came together in 1787, and we formed our republic. We are a representative republic with a democratic form of government. The Article 6, Section 3 of the United States Constitution pulls everything together, and it says this is the supreme law of the land, to which all government, state and federal, is subject. It doesn't say the people are subject to it. It is the government that is subject to these laws, all of them. So God gave us the rights, the powers, to create. We said, we want this for us, we want this protection. That's what it all means. That's how it all fits together.
Thanks, Ms. Hudson. All right, that was the last speaker that signed up to speak tonight. So again, thank you to everyone who came out. It's really important that you come in here and we're listening, so thanks. We'll move now into new business. We have several new business items for appointments. Mr. Coleman, are you leading that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's pause real quick. You guys want to make an exit before we get into this next business? There you go. Thank you. All right. Mr. Coleman, I know I sent you all of my recommendations, and then you forwarded email to all the council members. I have not received any type of feedback or any way negative or positive, so it's on you.
So I'll start with new business one, which is the Board of Adjustment. The, there are three recommended actions. One is to move William Hollenbeck from alternate two to alternate one. Two is to move Heidi Sisko from alternate three to alternate two. This is consistent with our prior practices. They would keep their original terms. And then there, it left one vacancy for the alternate three position, and Casey Angel is being recommended for appointment for that seat.
Thank you. All right, there's the information for that. New business item, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Second, Killersworth. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries. New business two.
Okay. New business two is also related to Board of Adjustment. At the last meeting, we had a vacancy in the vice chair role, and so the Board of Adjustment met in September and recommended unanimously William Hart fill that position. The mayor also supports that recommendation.
All right, information's before you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion. Gray, Second Killersworth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. New business three.
New business three is a possible motion to appoint two corporate limit residents to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. There are two recommended candidates for this, Perry Ambrose and Aaron Barnes.
Motion to approve?
Motion. Ziggaman?
Second.
Second, again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. New business four.
New business four, we've got a one vacancy in the voting youth position and one vacancy in the regular member over 18 years of age. The mayor has recommended for the youth position, Dehanvi Joshi, and then for the regular seat, Sandra Velasenor.
All right, information's before you, Council. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Gray.
Second.
Second, Ziggaman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next, business five.
New business five, we have multimodal transportation advisory board appointments. Again, two actions, requested to appoint two corporate limit residents over the age of 18 to the multimodal advisory board, and one voting youth position. The recommendations are for Jennifer Ailer and Elizabeth Bruner for the regular positions.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion, Ziggaman, second, Gray. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. New business six.
One more on that one. We've got the.
That's right, we got the.
Youth position as well. And that's Shamiski Kadari.
All right. With that recommendation, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Gray.
Second.
Second, again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Six.
New business six, we've got two actions requested, possible motion to appoint one corporate limit residence over the age of 18 to the planning board. This is to fill a partial term expiring in December of this year. This position was vacated by prior. This position was vacated by prior board member Tina Sharman. And also to appoint the one non-voting youth position who shall reside in the corporate limits as well. And the recommended candidates are Christie Yule for the corporate limits over eighteen position and Renita Stanley for the youth position.
All right, thank you for that. Information's before you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Killers worth.
Second.
Second. Ziggerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank y'all. All right. Very well. Seven oh four. We moving. Let's go to presentation from Taylor Ray. We'll hear about some sculpture purchase.
Hi.
All right, how you doing tonight?
I'm doing well. Hope you are?
Right.
Good. Good evening, mayor and council. I come to you today representing the Apex Culture and Arts Advisory Board to recommend the purchase of Prismatic Cyclone. Prismatic Cyclone was created by artist Lawrence Fear and was named the People's Choice Award winner for the twenty-five, twenty-six Sculpture Walk. This is the only kinetic sculpture in this year's Sculpture Walk. As part of the Sculpture Walk program, the viewer gets an opportunity to listen to the artists themselves explain the background behind each piece that was created through our interactive app Autocast. Fear describes his piece, Prismatic Cyclone, in this way. For more than two decades, kinetic sculptures have been the focus of my creative endeavors. My stainless steel kinetic sculptures offer an engaging experience with the viewers that remain in constant motion, continually transforming. Even the slightest breeze sets them spinning, captivating the eye to reflect the color of the surroundings. Prismatic Cyclone is a stainless steel kinetic sculpture that explores the interplay of positive and negative space as it pivots in the wind. Its fluid curves gracefully shift around a soaring central axis catching the wind, reflecting sunlight, causing the vibrant colors you see. So this piece here was professionally praised and offered to us for purchase for fourteen thousand dollars. If approved for purchase, the Culture and Arts Advisory Board would like to relocate this sculpture in March of twenty-twenty-six to Pleasant Park, adjacent to the Enchanted Forest Playground, the Splash Pad, and the Concession Shelter. This location was specifically chosen for its position in direct sun to reflect the colorful and playful surfaces around that part of the park. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, discussion.
Ms. Ray, I noted the town manager recently that one of the sculptures near the police department was broken a little bit, and hopefully that will be addressed. But it makes me wonder about these sculptures that are in motion. Is there some kind of maintenance agreement because of the increased chances of something messing up over time with these sculptures when they're moving?
Absolutely. So each piece has a maintenance plan. So the piece that you're speaking of by the police department is inky, and that piece itself is an older piece, so the materials that keep those stones together were degrading. We decided to take it apart, speak with the artist, and he's coming in actually on the twentieth to get it all situated and back to its normal stature. So each piece does have an artist that we do keep in touch with, and we have a plan to make each piece back to its normal stature if something was to come up. So there's always a maintenance plan.
Is there a length of time when that expires?
We don't have a length and time in place, no.
Okay. So the artist, in theory, is agreeing, at least as long as they're able to maintain if something breaks on these?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Ziggerman.
Second.
Second. Killers worth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the last item. We move now to, is there a motion to go into closed session for the item presented here?
Some move.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Moving to closed session. There is no more business tonight after the closed session. Thank you for being here. Which, who's up? Which, who's, uh?